The October 13th, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I ask Board Member Kelly King to give us our motto.
Yes, we are Marion County School District Governance Team. If we chose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda items or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Ken Magatia, Director of Psychological and Social Work Services, please introduce who will be providing us with the inspiration and pledge tonight.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Thoreau, members of the board, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Green, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. We're very excited to be here this evening as we get closer to the start of Red Ribbon Week. With me tonight are our lead social worker Lisa Panzer and social worker Katie Burle to do the inspiration and pledge and share with us more about Red Ribbon Week. Ladies.
Good evening, Ms. McCall, Ms. Thoreau, Ms. King, Chair Cummings, Ms. Martinez Lopez, Dr. Gullett. Red Ribbon Week is a ripple here in our community. We are asking Marion County schools and our community to join us with making our own ripple, becoming a wave against drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. Red Ribbon Week is not just education for students about the negative outcomes of substance misuse, but it is education for our parents and an offering of support to the community. I stood before you last year sharing a story about an amazing man, Kiki, who made his own ripple of change. He was a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was quoted as saying, "I am only one person, but I want to make a difference." He battled against illegal drugs and was tortured and murdered for his cause. His tiny ripple of change brought together a wave of friends and neighbors who began to wear red badges of satin. Parents sick of the destruction of alcohol and drugs began forming coalitions. These coalitions became the Red Ribbon Campaign. Today, the Red Ribbon serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities, to educate youth, and to encourage participation in drug prevention activities, making the wave of change. This year, the Children's Alliance and our schools have decided to come together with one message surrounding the three E's, citing this year's theme of "Imagine What You Can Be If You Are Drug-Free." As a school social worker and this year's chair for our Red Ribbon Campaign, I am so excited to say Marion County schools will be participating in Red Ribbon Week October 26th through 30th. The kickoff will begin Friday, the 23rd, at Ocala Drive-In. We're encouraging schools to embrace this year's theme and have conversations with students and the community about what their inspired future looks like, what E they will be selecting, and how remaining drug-free will positively impact their choice of enrollment, employment, or enlistment. Ripples alone are not very powerful, but when many ripples join together, they become a powerful wave of change. Please join me again as we welcome this wave and in supporting our students and our community's inspired future. Imagine what you can be if you stay drug-free. Thank you.
Please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 13th, 2020 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
移到
Moved by Ms. Thoreau. Seconded by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 28th, 2020 special school board meeting, public hearing, tentative budget?
Aye.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 28th, 2020 school board meeting?
移到
Moved by Ms. Thoreau.
Here.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 30th, 2020 special school board meeting?
移到
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Here.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either with regard to one of tonight's agenda items or a matter which relates to the operation of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of the procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms are due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice from me to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. No verbal attacks or profanity are allowed. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline to include expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board with regard to a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is prohibited. Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, how many speakers for tonight?
We have one speaker, Mr. Jared Buchanan.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jared Buchanan. I live at 14094 East Highway 40, Silver Springs. My last name is spelled B-U-C-H-A-N-A-N. Speaking as a father, my son is at East Marion Elementary as a kindergartner this year. And last week, my son was in his bedroom playing and placing some of my wife's baby doll clothes on one of his toys. And I asked him to put that away and to clean his room, as I told him earlier in the day. And he corrected me and told me that he was allowed to dress up baby dolls. So I asked him what he meant by that, and he referenced a book that he read in school. And the book series is called Z Book Series. It's part of the SCL, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum that Marion County has adopted. And I started to research this, and I understand that this is adopted by Florida Legislature after the Marjorie Douglas Stoneman shooting. School boards are having to have this SCL in the school boards. There are a variety of SCL books such as Zones of Regulation, Sanford Harmony, Leaders in Me, and Second Step. My problem is with Sanford Harmony's Z Book. While there are many good things in that curriculum that span the entire year, there are also some very disturbing things about gender in the curriculum. And I, in my opinion, I believe it blurs the line between boy-ness and girl-ness. In the curriculum I have here in front of me, there are many things I highlighted such as to the teachers not to avoid using gender to organize classrooms, boys and girls. One disadvantage to categorizing boys and girls, the curriculum says, "This is essentialist thinking or the belief that underlying essence," i.e. boy-ness, exists. And it goes on lesson after lesson, trying to tear down traditional stereotypes of boys and girls, which at some point, there is truth to the being courteous and respectful of all children, no matter how they are. However, I believe that this curriculum goes a step further than simply saying to be courteous to those who are not like them, but instead, it sets forth beliefs and subjective ideas that most parents, I believe, in Marion County would not approve of if they knew about this. I approached the school and the counselor at the school, guidance counselor, and they were not as familiar with these lessons. And I pointed out, it's Lesson 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, where this gender schema is taught. And it was something new to them as she looked at it. And it was, her response was, "This is what the school board adopted." I would urge the school board to appoint a parent committee to look into the SCL and choose another curriculum other than Sanford Harmony, which is based from New York City and is bankrolled by a billionaire philanthropist. And instead, look at other SELs such as Zones of Regulation, Second Step, Leaders in Me to use. Not all schools in Marion County use Sanford Harmony, but most do. And though it's a lovable little alien from out of space that has to learn gender norms, and the kids love it, and there's little teddy bears, I think it is, in my opinion, a Trojan horse to teach a progressive education that Marion County voters would not approve of. And as a pastor of Aquaah Bridge Baptist Church, I speak on behalf of a lot of my members that are equally upset about this. This morning, I had a meeting with 15 pastors in our association for prayer, and I brought this up, and all 15 expressed their concerns about this as well. I do not speak on behalf of the Marion Baptist Association, but that seemed to be the consensus this morning as I spoke to them about it. I was discouraged that the guidance counselor, and I even called another guidance counselor of another school, were not as familiar with the lessons down the road in the school year as they ought to be. I don't believe that teachers are trained enough to be therapists to these children. I think that parents should have a consent form that they agreed to, to allow their child to be taught this every day in kindergarten. I believe that this is just a step too far for what needs to be taught, which is respect of other children, no matter how they are, which is understandable and is part of Christian faith. But this goes a step further and tries to promote and push an agenda that's contrary to traditional values. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Buchanan. Any comments?
Thank you for bringing us here.
Yes, I think we need to know that. I hadn't read it.
I didn't know.
All right, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Viallo, y'all pull something, and let's look at this so we can look at it and talk about it.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Cummings and members of the board. We will review this, and we're reviewing curriculum for next year as well. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Pastor Buchanan.
Thank you very much.
Those are some things we don't know, and that's why we have public comments, so you can let us know those things. Thank you. Any other?
No, I just want to appreciate that. Thank you for speaking on behalf of the community because we need to be very vigilant where our children are being taught. And I agree with your sentiments with it is a Trojan horse that is coming into our schools, and there's an agenda that is behind that curriculum, you know, that is for our children, and there's no place for that agenda in our schools. So that's my stance on that, so.
Right. We definitely need to teach courtesy and kindness and all those things, but there shouldn't be any subliminal messages in any curriculum that we teach going in any direction. So, thank you. All right. May I have a motion to approve the school district of Marion County Five-Year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2020 through 2021 through 2024 through 2025?
移到
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Here.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau.
Chairman Cummings, members of the board, the board is required by statute to issue and approve an annually updated five-year district facilities work program of all projective school system capital outlay construction projects and major maintenance projects for submittal to an approval by the Department of Education.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the five-year district facilities work program? There being no one, any discussion?
Chairman Cummings, I would just like the public to know that we reviewed this district plan thoroughly at one of our workshops. This is not something we're not familiar with.
Correct. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to adopt the 2019 through 2020 school year revisions made to the 2017 through 2020 Exceptional Students Education Policies and Procedures Document, SPNP?
移到
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, seconded by Ms. King.
Chairman Cummings, members of the board, the revised SPNP document complies with the Florida Department of Education requirements that propose procedures for the provisions of special instruction and services for exceptional students be provided to the Department of Education.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2019, 2020 school year revisions made to the 2017 through 2020 SPNP? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve Consensual Agenda Items C8.1 through C20.2?
移到
Moved by Ms. Thoreau.
Here.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or charitable donations that have a total value of $55,781. Smythe 1324 Mill Drill and Laguna IQ CNC Machine valued at $7,900 to Bellevue High School from Ernest Martinez. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Bellevue Santos Elementary School for the Marion County Veterans Council. $2,500 to Bellevue Santos Elementary School from their business partner, Express Care Bellevue LLC via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. 650 art kits valued at $5,000 to College Park Elementary School from Appleton Museum of Art College of Central Florida. $6,500 to Dunellon High School from Marion County Hospital District. $4,000 to Dunellon High School from the Morgridge Family Foundation, SSF. 850 student shirts valued at $2,975 to Emerald Soars Elementary School from Junior League of Ocala. $2,500 to Fort King Middle School from their business partner, Pediatric Associates of Ocala, PA via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. 400 public gift cards valued at $8,000 to the Marion County Public School Student Services, Psychological Services, Social Work Services Department from United Way of Marion County. $2,000 to Marion Technical College from GFWC Greater Ocala Women's Club. Dell Enterprise Service Rack on Wheels with Seven Servers valued at $4,900 to Marion Technical Institute from Ernest Martinez. $2,500 to OCL Elementary School from their business partner, Reed Orthodontics via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Saddlewood Elementary School from their business partner, E1 Court via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to South Ocala Elementary School from their business partner, Neighborhood Storage Center via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Sunrise Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council and Corp. May I have a motion?
移到
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Ms. Thoreau, can you give us our thanks tonight for all these great donations?
Yes, absolutely, with pleasure. We continue to be so grateful and so appreciative to just the wide spectrum of folks and business partners and community agencies and companies and private philanthropy that continue to support our schools and our mission of providing the best education possible to our kids. So, thank you so much from all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for October 22nd, 2020 at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss 2021 tentative work session schedule, review of district-wide attendance zone, winter sports and middle school sports update, and First Amendment to school resource officer contracts. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 5th, 2020 at 9 o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss additional review of district-wide attendance zones if necessary. We almost there? Ms. Lopez, any comments?
No, sir.
Ms. Green, Attorney Green?
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. I hate to disrupt the flow. I have two brief items, one being I just want to say publicly appreciation and thanks to our wonderful committed principals. It's National Principals Recognition Month, and while I have the chance to say that personally face-to-face with them, I want to thank them publicly for all the work in leading our schools during this time. And then, second item, I'm going to ask Mr. Christian to pull up. If the pleasure of the board, I would like to share our ICROC video. We presented, we had an opportunity at our last ICROC meeting to hear from the departments, the incredible work that's happening in our schools. And while the members of the Oversight Committee are obviously unable to visit schools right now, we wanted to provide a video to show the great things that are happening with our students. So, six-minute video, correct, Mr. Christian, I believe. So, I wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you.
In the aftermath of this century's recession, budget cuts put art, music, physical education, and media service programs into halftime mode. This meant teachers of these subjects and services split their day between two or more schools, and students received only half of these valuable experiences. Marion County voters resolved this issue by approving a one-mill referendum in 2014 to restore these programs, then renewed it four years later, adding vocational programs and school safety to the mix. Today, five years into the referendum, despite a society dealing with COVID-19 and the unknown, students in Marion County public schools continue experiencing these classes full-time in creative ways. Take art class at East Marion Elementary, for example. Teacher Ann Hamilton takes her supplies and skills on the road to individual classrooms now, going to the students instead of them coming to her. This cuts down potential exposure time and keeps individual student groups together instead of intermingling with others. She calls it "art on a cart," and students remain engaged in the process.
I'm back in elementary, and I'm back teaching off a cart, and it's kind of fun. It's not as easy to push a cart in my 60s as it was when I was in my 20s, but it can still be done. You can still get your lessons across. It's, yeah, we kind of make it fun.
About 16 miles away, this is the chorus class at Forest High School. For teacher Jessica Mongerio, excellence remains the expectation, and students are tuned in to great performances, albeit with masks and safe social distancing.
I miss the full, the full sound of them not being muffled, but a lot of my colleagues are not singing, so I'm just, I'm glad we've found a way to do it safely, and we've had literally no issues. And a lot of my students' parents say, "My kids feel safer in your class than other classes because it is always spaced out and always with masks all the time."
Physical education classes typically use the outdoors for classrooms. Today, physical contact is much more limited and monitored throughout each class period.
One, two, three, four. Okay, you've done it, you love it.
Inside schools, things look different, too. The importance of working technology now dominates education and provides the lifeline to thousands of online students.
So, everything we do is technology-driven, so these kids have learned Microsoft Office applications. We are using Microsoft Teams as the online learning platform, so everything was able to transfer over, and it's just kind of transferring those skills that they've learned in my class to their new COVID situation.
To ensure the district keys into spending referendum dollars as promised, an ICROC group or Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee meets quarterly to review income and expenses doled out by the district. They then report to the Marion County School Board on how the district is doing with keeping its word. The amount raised by the referendum has increased each year thanks to rising property values. When it started, the referendum produced just under $16 million. Today, that number has climbed to over $20 million. The referendum also funds various reading programs, supports class size requirements, and helps the district keep state-certified teachers and paraprofessionals. Last school year, referendum dollars paid for 92 teachers and 212 paraprofessionals to help meet class size reduction, 25 PE teachers and 31 techs, 16 vocational teachers and three bus drivers to transport participating students, 15 and 1/2 media specialist positions and 17 aides, 19 and 1/2 art teacher units, and 19 music teachers and a program specialist to oversee art and music for the entire district. Professional development for teachers is also part of the promise, along with new expenses to help keep schools safe. Here's the big picture of how referendum dollars were spent last year. At the beginning of this school year, the district carried over $4.4 million in referendum dollars, reserved only for allowable expenses. That's in addition to whatever the one mill brings in this fiscal year.
You got it?
All right, we got it.
All right, so those are the picture hangers.
All right, let's go, let's go, let's go.
Just like the referendum that generates lots of factors for accountability, students in William Tenny's Logistics Class at Lake Weir Middle are accountable for inventory. For this vocational education experience, this means lots of numbers, sorting, counting, and packing classroom supplies for a program benefiting outlying schools.
It is very important because if you don't have the stuff you need, then stuff can go wrong. And this is very important because what you need is what you get, and when you order what you need, you get it on time, and it's good, it's good business.
Referendum dollars help pay for positions and programs at every school. The future of these remain in the hands of voters, as they'll likely have the opportunity to renew their support before the current referendum sunsets in 2023.
So, in full disclosure, some of the clips that you see were pre-COVID. That's why they were not all wearing their masks. Some of those were before the pandemic. But I want to thank the committee and thank, most importantly, our community for supporting these vital programs to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Ms. McCall?
Certainly. First of all, I want to, I
Certainly, first of all, I want to again thank Pastor Buchanan for coming. It is, as I have said in the past, it takes courage to get up and speak like that, and I want him and the community to know that we hear you, and we will, we will take a look into it. Also, I want to, on behalf of the Children's Alliance, thank Katie Burlisle and Lisa Panzer for stepping up to the plate for Red Ribbon Week. The numbers are down for our kids on the use of drugs. Unfortunately, they're going up for vaping, and we're working on a campaign for that, but the education and the prevention is so very important, so I want to thank those ladies. Last year, they did an incredible job on Red Ribbon. I think it's going to be fun. We're watching a movie at the drive-in, there's lots of things going on, we can't have the Red Ribbon Fair that we normally do, but my staff has worked very, very hard to plan a good kickoff, and I just think it's such an important message for our community, so thank them, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Ms. King?
Yes, I would also like to, again, thank Pastor Buchanan for bringing that to the board's attention. Also, thank you for recognizing the ICROC committee and those dollars. They are vital to our schools, and they are such a great help. And I can go back to 2014 when I was still the classroom teacher, and I, you know, and I completely understand how important it is for our students to have, you know, physical ed, art, music, and media specialist. And so, it's good to see those dollars being used appropriately. And again, I would like to thank the committee that meets quarterly to make sure that we are spending those dollars correctly, and when it's not COVID, they do go into the schools and, and not, they just don't rubber stamp it, they actually go in and see what's taking place in the schools to make sure that we're doing right by our dollars. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Thora?
Yes, and again, I too want to thank Pastor Buchanan for bringing this to our attention. Sanford Harmony is in use in the 10 largest school districts in the United States. Probably a big reason for that is because it's free, and it really does have, as Pastor Buchanan stated, some very, very important lessons for, for kids to learn. But we always need to be mindful of anything that comes through a private organization as to whether or not, do they have any underlying motivations beyond doing everything we can to help keep students safe and be kind to each other and get through each day, you know, knowing that we're all supposed to be in school for the same reason, which is to learn. So, I'm pleased that folks from the community come in and share with us, especially in such a kind concern and expressive way that Pastor Buchanan did. And moving on, October is Breast Awareness Month, and as most of you know, mammograms are a huge, it's really important for, to me, to know that our employees understand what a benefit it is to be able to get free mammograms, whether you're a male or a female. And again, pre-COVID, we had a really nice program, you know, going on in partnership with Radiology Associates, and really made it fun with a lot of welcoming activities and things more geared to women, but, but the most important thing is, is that we were capturing, you know, people that hadn't had a mammogram in a very long time. And we all know that early detection makes all the difference in terms of being able to overcome this cancer, which is the second-most common cancer in women with non-melanoma skin cancer being number one. So, so the more we can take good care of our employees and the more we can help employees take good care of themselves, it's a win-win for everybody. You know, our kids need their beloved folks with them in school, and so, please, if you haven't gotten your mammogram yet, October is definitely the month to do it. The only other thing that I had on my mind is, this is in the spirit of continuing to be fluid and flexible and, and looking at each week as it comes and emails that we all get, I know the Rock program is very anxious to get back into our schools as soon as possible, and my understanding is it, right now, it's not until January, is that correct, when we're looking at volunteer groups coming back into our schools?
Thank you, Vice Chair Thora, yes, that's correct at this time.
Okay, okay, and I don't know if there's any latitude there or not for a program like The Rock that does serve so many needy children, but I know that their volunteers are willing to sign a release, they're willing to do whatever it takes to be able to be helpful, they continue to be really concerned about our kids' well-being, so I just wanted to share that with you. And, and it's not confined to The Rock, we have so many volunteer groups that are, to use a horse country term, chomping at the bit, you know, to get back in our schools and be helpful, you know, with, with kids directly. So, just wanted to thank the outreach from The Rock, and thank you for keeping us in your thoughts and in your prayers, and certainly, I think it's all of our intentions to do everything we can to get all of our volunteers back as soon as it's safe. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thora. Thank you.
No, I was just saying that we need to make sure that we're safe. I think we've done a good job of keeping our students and staff members safe, so I'm just comfortable with what we've been doing, I was just throwing that out.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Very, very, first and foremost, I want to always thank our staff, all of our staff around this district, for the things that they do every day that may seem to be thoughtless to some, but it's not thoughtless. They do an excellent job on keeping our kids safe and educating them, no matter what platform or format they're doing, they're, they're doing an excellent job, and we want to continue to encourage them to hang in there. We know it's difficult, it's a difficult season, it's a difficult time, but you guys are putting the work in, and you're putting the effort in, and you're making a difference in the lives of our kids, and I thank you. How do you know you're making a difference? Because our stats in Marion County don't look like other counties. We're doing a heck of a job on trying to keep, keeping people safe, and that's a huge, huge task, and you guys are doing an excellent job. So, I thank, thank the teams that have put those plans together, I thank you for following the recommendations and the procedures that we set forth to keep kids safe and keep everyone safe. I just, one of, one of the things that I just don't ever want to hear is that somebody, that we lost somebody because of a safety issue with COVID, and we're doing an excellent job, so continue to do what you're doing. Please don't get lax, please don't get laxadaisical with this, numbers are changing daily, but please keep doing what you're doing and just stay vigilant in that process. I also want to, I want to commend Pastor Buchanan for being courageous enough to come here. There's a song in the church that says, "I'll, I'll go if I have to go by myself," and he came by himself to speak on an issue that is pressing, and I encourage all parents to be an advocate for your kids. You are the ones that know what's going on and what's being taught, and I, I'm definitely glad that he came forth tonight and was being that advocate for his kids, but in being an advocate for his child is going to be an advocate for so many others. I had not read the curriculum that he's talking about, and you're right, Ms. Thora, it is in 10 large districts in the school, in the country, it is free, and my father always told me, "You get what you pay for," so we need to make sure that we're looking at what we're, what we're using to make sure that there are no hidden agendas. That's not, that's not the job of the school district to deal in hidden agendas, it's us to educate kids and prepare these kids to be the best adults that they can be when they leave our school system. So, we, we, we're not going to be in that business, so we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to take care of them. And, and then finally, board members, not finally, I do want to thank, we had a great ICROC meeting a couple of weeks ago. The community needs to know what we do with those referendum funds, because the community are, is putting forth those funds to make sure that we're doing great things in our district. And they, the video, I'm praying that they can see the video again and again, because sometimes they think that their money is just going somewhere else, and you can see your money at work then through that video and seeing the things that we're doing with that referendum funding. And we thank the citizens of Marion County that voted for that referendum and for the taxpayers, because it's needed. Let me say that, it's needed, and we need more, to be honest with you, because there's other things that we need to get done, but we're grateful for what you have done, and we're going to make sure that we do the right thing. Dr. Gonzalez and his team, they do go through those schools, they are looking to make sure that every penny is where it's supposed to be, and we thank that Citizens Committee for that, so thank you. Finally, board members, we have a board meeting for 11/24, November 24. I'm asking that we would move that board meeting, or cancel that board meeting, postpone it, what's the right word? Cancel, cancel, because that's the week of Thanksgiving. And I'm sure that most of us are going to be doing family-oriented things, and if I'm not mistaken, I'm thinking we're out of school that whole week.
The staff, the staff.
Schools out that whole week.
Staff's here.
Staff will be here. Okay, so, November 24, so, oh, where are you? Are the things that we have on the agenda are a couple audits and, what is it?
The personnel reports that come out, so those are things that can be moved, there's nothing on there at this time, contract-wise or anything.
That's depressing, okay.
So, if we're in agreement, we'll move that, we'll cancel that November 24 meeting. With that being said, that concludes my comments.
Let's get a consensus.
We have a consensus, right?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have a consensus, for the record, we have a consensus. With that being said, do we have any expulsion matters or anything like that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternate placement list for students due September 21, 2021, 2020. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on the child's dismatring matter?
We have not, we do not.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 21001E with educational services for the remainder of the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Unanimous. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. McCall. All in favor, signify by aye. Our meeting is adjourned at 6:13 p.m. Thank you.